Okay, we call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following.
Allegiance certified, United States of America, into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Allen, here. Lafore.
Here.
Mr. Avich.
Here.
Reindell.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Good to see everybody here. Approval of minutes for the City Council Meeting of April 3rd. Motion be in order?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion made and support. Any discussion on those minutes? Be you not? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. And I think everybody's here to, is on the agenda. So we will move on. Mr. City Manager, any changes in the agenda?
Uh, yes, I would ask that Council, uh, add item eight, odd forms.
City Council, any changes? Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
Support.
Motion made and support. Any discussion? Be you not? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support.
Motion made and supported. There's no discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to items for consideration this evening. We have eight. First one is consideration of approving the request to conduct, conduct the National Day of Prayer. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider a request from the Richmond area pastors to recognize Thursday, May 4th, 2023, as the National Day of Prayer. In previous years, the city has recognized the National Day of Prayer by allowing the area pastors to publicly pray in front of City Hall. Uh, once again this year, the Richmond area Good Old Days Festival has agreed to provide pizza and luncheon immediately following, uh, the Day of Prayer here in the City Council chambers.
Thank you. Pastor Igley?
How are you guys?
Good to see you back this year, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, would you like to add anything to that?
No, just, uh, to thank you guys again for, uh, allowing us to be able to do that and participating. Your, your participating with us means a lot because it kind of helps cohesify the, uh, the community, you know, to say, hey, we're all in this together, but, so, for that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the proclamation recognizing Thursday, May 4th, 2023, as the National Day of Prayer and to invite members of the public to pray beginning at 12:20 PM.
Support.
Motion made and support. Any other discussion? Looking forward to good weather? If not, we come inside.
Yes. Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Thank you. Item number two is consideration of second reading and adoption of ordinance 156-32, recreational vehicle ordinance update. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, this one, uh, we held the introduction first reading right before the holidays. Uh, when we went to schedule the second reading and adoption of our next item, we realized we had never brought this back for second reading and adoption. So, uh, the numbers weren't going to work if we didn't approve this first. Uh, so, uh, again, for those that, uh, may have forgotten, uh, the change that we had the introduction first reading were really definition changes to what is a recreational vehicle. The planning commission had gone through those definitions, um, and we kind of exempt, uh, uncovered utility trailers, which are very common in our community, that people put their lawnmower on or their dirt bikes or whatever, or haul, you know, things around with. So, those are exempted from being considered, uh, because you're only allowed one, uh, recreational vehicle. So if you have a travel trailer plus a small utility trailer, you're technically over our ordinance. So, in looking at the ordinance, we felt that those should be exempted. Also, street legal motorcycles and mopeds, things like that, uh, technically under the letter of the old law, uh, would have counted, each one would have counted as a recreational vehicle, which isn't practical, uh, here at a small town. So, uh, again, those were the changes. Uh, we had done the introduction and first reading and, uh, the planning commission had held a public hearing on this, um, that was notified in the paper. So, uh, we're just recommending that we give second reading and adoption.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to give second reading and adoption of ordinance 156-32, which amends section 25.02 to amend what is considered a recreational vehicle.
Support.
Motion made and support. Any discussion on this? I know there was many hours spent on this, uh, by the planning commission, uh, over a couple of months there.
Yes.
We really were scrutinizing what is and what isn't, what should be for our community, rather than, uh, you know, other communities. And I, I think it worked out really well. And of course, nobody has responded since first reading.
No.
Okay. We gave them plenty of time this night.
We've, yes.
Any comments from the public? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number three is consideration of second reading and adoption of ordinance 156-33, package liquor ordinance update. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider giving second reading and adoption of ordinance 156-33, which amends section 402, the table of permitted uses by district, and section 2502 definitions, and removes section 60, 6.510, package liquor store from the zoning ordinance. Uh, as we discussed during the introduction and first reading, some recent changes in state law, uh, have made our ordinance language obsolete. Um, we still will control what, uh, it will still be listed in the land use table, uh, because obviously you don't want a packaged liquor store in a residential area, so to speak, or, or things of that nature. Um, but some of the other language that isn't enforceable due to the changes in the law, um, as far as like distance separation or separation from certain other types of uses, we're removing because, uh, because of the change in state law.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to give second reading and adoption of ordinance 156-33, which amends section 4.02 and 25.02 to remove section 6.510 from the zoning ordinance.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion on this? I want to make this clear. This is strictly package liquor sales, not consumption.
Correct.
That, we still control that.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments, discussions on? We've heard nothing from the public?
No.
On the second reading? Okay. Any comments from the public? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number four, consideration of water supply chemical feed pump purchase. Mr. City Manager?
The city of Richmond adds chlorine and phosphate to the drinking water, uh, for disinfection and iron sequestration. Uh, the chemicals are added through feed pumps at each well site. Uh, the feed pumps require periodic repair and replacement, and the city keeps a small inventory of repair parts. Um, but what we're realizing is that the, uh, LMI diaphragm pumps, that used to be the industry standard, are no longer, uh, the industry standard, and, and we're recommending the purchase of three peristaltic, yeah, Jim can give a better pronunciation of that, but, uh, style pumps. Um, we've, we've installed one at one of our, uh, pump, uh, wellhouses. It's working much better than the old style. Uh, so now we want to purchase three, which takes us over the limit. So, we're recommending that we waive, uh, the purchasing ordinance and, uh, purchase three of these new pumps.
Very good. Jim, anything to add to that?
Uh, yeah, the, so the, we've used, uh, diaphragm style pumps for years, and it was, as, as the manager said, kind of the industry standard. This new, a peristaltic pump is just a new style of pump, and it, uh, is much, uh, less prone to, it's called air binding with chlorine. It kind of does build up a gas, and when a pump goes airbound, it doesn't actually pump the chemical. So we'll, we'll have issues where we'll go in the next day and find it hasn't used any chemical, and that's when we'll get calls from residents that our water tastes well-y, tastes like, you know, uh, and so that tends to be the issue there. Uh, these, these, this specific brand of pump is proven to be the, the most reliable of this style of pump. Our wastewater plant is used very similar, uh, the same company, slightly different model, and they, uh, really love it. They have almost no maintenance to it, and it's cost-effective once, it's a big upfront purchase. The, the reason for the large purchase now is, um, our water tower will be out of service for annual maintenance this year, and these pumps specifically are able to, uh, we've worked to install them in a wellhouse that they're able to fluctuate with demand, uh, based on the flow of the well pump itself. And so we want to get these in before we do that inspection that puts us in a, in a better position when, when we're, don't have the water tower. So, uh, that's the reason now, but we're, we've, we have installed one, and it's been working very well so far.
Very good. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make ma, a motion to waive purchasing ordinance requirement due to the section 6453A and to authorize the expense of $7,577 for the purchase of three peristaltic style pumps from RS Technical with funds charged to appropriate line item, water fund.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Any discussion? Any audience comments? Back to the table. Roll call?
Allen?
Yes.
Lafore?
Yes.
Mr. Avich?
Yes.
Reindell?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Motion does pass. Item number five, consideration of wastewater treatment plant boiler control repairs. Mr. City Manager?
The heating and cooling system controls that the wastewater plant aren't working, and the original thermostat was a pneumatic system, and that worked on low pressure instead of modern electronic components. Uh, so, uh, Tony's Heating and Cooling, uh, has inspected the system on two occasions and provided a recommendation to cost of effect, cost-effectively replace the old system with the three-zone system necessary, necessary sensors and low voltage wiring. Um, again, we're requesting that we waive, uh, the purchasing ordinance requirements. Um, and we did forget to put in bold underneath the motion there, this is, again, a roll call vote.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to waive purchasing ordinance requirements due to section 64-53D and to authorize the expense of $13,084 to Tony's Heating and Cooling for services related to the boiler control repairs with expenses charged to the appropriate line item in the wastewater treatment plant equipment replacement fund.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Jim, I'm sorry, did you have anything, yeah, you wanted to add?
Uh, I do want to comment that for, as far as the contractor, we work quite a bit with Tony's. We certainly have gone through many, uh, uh, opportunities to compare costs, and they are cost-effective. They, they have a very knowledgeable, uh, person on staff that has met at the plant a few times. The issue, this, this has been an issue for years. My hope, uh, from a cost perspective, was that we'd be able to, uh, you know, essentially manually adjust and get everything to balance properly, that the plant would, would heat and cool properly. That, that hasn't been the case. So, uh, when we met with this contractor, they said it would be, uh, there would be energy savings by having this run properly, and there, as well as comfort in our, our lab, it's very critical that that's at the right temperature, that impacts the rest of the plant currently. And so by fixing this, all the offices and other parts of the building can be properly heated and cooled. It's, it's been, uh, in service since the plant was expanded in the eighties, so it's, there have been some minor changes, repairs. The boilers were replaced, uh, a number of years ago, and this was not touched at that time. It probably should have been, so now we're, we're here.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Public comments? Back to the table. Roll call?
Allen?
Yes.
Lafore?
Yes.
Mr. Avich?
Yes.
Reindell?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Motion does pass. Item number six is consideration pump to removal at the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, the raw sewage screw pumps at the wastewater treatment plant, uh, left incoming sewage into the plant at the start of the treatment, this, uh, process. Uh, pump number two, uh, failed in 2022, and we recently determined to be unreparable. Uh, we'd like to get this out of the way. Uh, we'd also like to take a look at it and examine exactly what failed in it, um, as we look to do replacements and repairs to the other two. Uh, so, kind of, we want to get it out of the way, but also, more importantly, uh, take a look at what actually went wrong with it, and it's hard to do that with it in place. So, uh, we do have a, a price from Raymond Excavating, uh, for the removal.
Thank you. Is, Jim, anything to add to this?
Um, what the city manager said is correct, but in addition to that, we actually have another part of the operation that uses the same pump, uh, these screw pumps, and, uh, one of those pumps actually needs some, uh, work as well, that's in the next fiscal year budget. Part of the reason to take this out now is to allow us to, uh, send parts out for repairs so that we don't have, we limit downtime when we do that repair. But in addition, we, we definitely need to remove the, this pump to allow us, uh, the opportunity to replace or put something temporary in place to make sure the plant is able to handle all incoming flows.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to authorize the expense of $4,844 to Raymond Excavating for services related to the removal of the raw sewage pump number two with the expense charged of the appropriate line item in the wastewater treatment plant equipment replacement fund.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion on this item? Any particular reason why it's come to council, meaning it's under 5,000?
Uh, it wasn't in the budget, and so just, we, we felt kind of, sure, yeah, technically, do we have the right to administratively approve this, but it was close enough that then they get out there and something happens, and there's an unforeseen expense that goes over 5,000, so we just.
Very good.
Kind of covering ourselves.
Yep. Okay. Any discussion on this? Any public comments? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Item number seven, consideration of bid awards City Hall improvements Picture Committee. Mr. City Manager?
Uh, the city council scheduled, is scheduled to approve a bid submitted through the city of Richmond Picture Committee for renovations to City Hall. Uh, while meeting with the Picture Committee, um, one of the first things that we felt was important was some improvements to the council chambers, the community room, and the lobby, uh, before we just start going and hanging pictures everywhere. Uh, there was some, some, uh, improvements that, uh, obviously, when we moved over here, uh, didn't do everything, uh, with that project. And so this will kind of, uh, make this room, uh, a little nicer and, and have more of a community history to it, uh, as well as the lobby, uh, with the display case that would be going out there. We can display some of our artifacts so that people coming to City Hall can see them, uh, rather than have them sitting on a shelf or in a vault where no one can see them. Uh, and then in the community room, uh, as many of you that have been in there recently, the, uh, it was built in 94, and the wallpaper, the wallboard, or whatever it is, is really starting to show, uh, its age. Uh, so it'll be, uh, removing all that and painting that room, as well as on the, uh, this side of that room, which I guess would be the, uh, north side of the, of the community room, we would install kind of like a timeline along the wall with significant events. When did we become a village? When did we become a city? When did CN Railroad come through town? When was the wastewater treatment plant built? Things like that, so that as that room gets used by different organizations, um, you know, some of the homeowners associations or, uh, different groups like that, from time to time meet in there, they'll sit in there and, and also learn about our community history. So, uh, all of those factors, uh, are, are some of the improvements that we're doing. Um, and, and so we received four, uh, quotes for the work. Uh, Rio Contracting, uh, was the low bidder, and so we're recommending, uh, approval, on his bid.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Rio Contracting in the amount of $29,900 for the City Hall renovations as described in the quote.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Is there any discussion on this item? Public comment? Back to the table. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. I would like to thank the committee, uh, for, uh, coming to all meetings, to come up with the plans and, 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 uh, the pictures and everything else. Uh, they're not done yet, but, uh, appreciate them coming in to help us. Okay, uh, on the amended agenda, item number eight, odd forms. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. We've been working with the Recreation Board on a lot of the odd forms and policies that we'll be using in the, uh, future, uh, as we open up, uh, the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium. Um, in your background brief, kind of, you can see kind of the bullet points where I've outlined all of the different kind of policies that, uh, on usage that the Recreation Board has reviewed, uh, over, I think, the past at least three meetings. Uh, every time we thought, you know, we had everything, then a new question would come up, and, you know, which is common with a new building. Obviously, you're trying to determine the best use for that building for the community, you know? Uh, so, uh, before you tonight, along with all of the information that's in the background brief, um, is a private rental agreement, also a nonprofit building usage agreement, and then volunteer forms. And I apologize, uh, the, um, nope, oh, there it is, sorry. It's there. Uh, the volunteer forms include one, kind of a volunteer application and a flyer on what, uh, volunteer opportunities there are, uh, as well as a iChat forum that we use for screening. For example, now we use it for, uh, park employees that are there working with children. Um, and so, uh, we would use that same process. It's through the state police. It's, uh, our person that handles all those is our, fortunately enough, because of Cam and Pool, our rec director. So she's already very familiar with that process, and it is able to run those people on the state police website. Um, so with that, um, I guess I'd answer any questions. Um, the, the private rental agreement is mainly intended to use if, if the odd isn't being used, somebody could rent it like they do our community center for a birthday party or a graduation party or something along those lines. The nonprofit building usage form is for kind of somebody doing a program in there. The Historical Society wants to do a, uh, you know, a, a program, uh, for the public, or the community theater wants to do a dinner theater in there, or, you know, any number of uses like that. They would use the nonprofit building usage form. And, and so, um, with that, again, uh, we've, we've done a lot of work with the rec, uh, board and kind of tried to guess on everything. We're never going to know 100% what somebody might want to use the building for, or some of the issues that, once we get open and running, uh, we may have. But this will go a long ways in getting there, and also getting it out to the public on, hey, if you want to volunteer, here's the form you use to volunteer, and that will help us determine how much programming we can offer at that building.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the odd usage forms, volunteer forms, fees and rules included in the attachments and within this background brief.
Support.
Motion made and supported. Margot, do you have anything to add to this?
I just, Jim, I didn't even have to call. Um, no, I mean, I, I think that it's going to go well. I'm getting a lot of calls wanting to use it on, whether it be for, um, like the little kids' practices or birthday parties or, or just to get in, so I'm excited to get it going.
Yeah, absolutely. A lot of work, a lot of discussion at the park and rec meetings on the forum and, and where we wanted to go, especially scrutinizing the, the fees, uh, for the nonprofits versus private use. Um, I think it'll entice people. We want to walk before we can run, basically. So, let's see how it goes, let's see what kind of use we can, uh, uh, get there, and then, uh, take a look at this, uh, you know, down the road, if we need to change things, if there's more expenses than, uh, we had imagined. Um, but we know it's, it's going to be something that the, um, general fund's going to have to cover, not unlike the pool. We never make enough money on the pool to cover the cost, but it's a great thing to have in our community as part of the quality of life we have in this town. The odd's going to do the same thing, I believe. Yep. Uh, but I, yeah, you heard a lot of people that want to get some programs going and whatnot for the youth.
All the way.
Yeah. So that's great. Great. Any, anything else? Any public comment? Back to the table. Michael?
Uh, yes, just, I really like this. This is spelled out really well. My one question is, there's a lot of people were excited about this historical aspect and actually calling it the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium. But I noticed that sometimes we kind of intermingle that with the odd, and I just wondered if, are we okay with kind of calling it both? Or was there an effort to kind of strictly call it by its real name, which is Roosevelt Civic Auditorium? I don't have a preference either way, but I just noticed in here, everything that we got was all Roosevelt Civic Auditorium, and then when it gets to the actual examples of kind of the punch goes into the odd and stuff too, so, nothing that we have to fix. I was just kind of wondered, as we're getting this going, do we still want to refer to it as the odd, which was a historical part, time period that the auditorium was used, and it was kind of commonly referred to as the odd, and it's easier to say. So, I don't really have a problem, but I was just trying to, at least in my mind, in talking with people, I thought it was trying to get to the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium as opposed to the odd.
And I'm sure there's two of us that want to answer your question, but I, and I, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Jack.
Um, certainly when we did the walkthroughs and stuff, there was discussions on, should we call it the odd? Obviously, most of the public calls it the odd.
Right.
And so even if we want them to use Roosevelt Civic Auditorium, it's a mouthful. Having said that, I think there was enough people that felt the historic nature of the building and why we're purchasing it from the school and keeping it alive, we want to acknowledge that history. And so, for example, the sign-out front that we're looking at replacing that was damaged in the windstorm, we'll say Roosevelt Civic Auditorium. Are we ever going to keep people from calling it the odd? No. So, for example, a punch card that some kid keeps on, in their pocket, might say the odd, just because it's easier to have that punch card say the odd versus sometimes it's a function of, you know, what the space you have for a flyer or a punch card. So like on the punch card, we reduced it to the odd. Um, what I've told staff here, based on the initial discussions that council and the rec board had during the walkthrough and, and stuff, was we should always use either Roosevelt Civic Auditorium or the odd, but we shouldn't mix and say the Civic Auditorium or the Roosevelt Auditorium. It should be either the full name, which I think is appropriate for some of the signage and the, uh, forms. Like you said, the private rental agreement at the top says that, but then down in the text sometimes it breaks. Goes into the odd because it flows in the sentence better. If I have that full name in a bullet point sentence here, sometimes it gets a little cumbersome, so, and again, we'll see, as, as people use, I get, uh, often, just because you want them to say one thing, that, uh, there's an acknowledgement that they will, when you're talking, it's, the odd rolls off your tongue. But it is nice to acknowledge the history of that building because it is so important.
And I think what you see, where you see the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium utilized is in the technical aspects, such as the forms.
Yeah. It's almost like still a nickname for it now, is the odd.
Yeah. Yeah.